Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Which, uh... I'll see which pile is it. Well, that's... Softball team, thirty-three is zero.
Thirty-three is zero?
Yeah, they've... They're undefeated, thirty-three wins, no losses.
Yeah, that's what I was going for. Yeah.
It's like, no, 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 no. I wish. Let's make it brief, let's make it...
Go ahead, I'll call this work session to order. Ask Councilwoman Jackson if you'd be so kind to give up on your issue.
Yeah, I would probably just thank you because you're kind, because you're gracious, because you're merciful, because you're solid, Lord God, because you're good, because you're great and great to be praised. We give you the name of glory and honor that is due. We take time to give you the praise that's due to your name, Lord God. We take time to say that you're a great, that you're awesome, that marvels are your works that our soul, Lord, right now. Father, right now, we submit our will to your will. We bind our lives to the mind of Christ. Lord God, we just beseech you, we for this living, Lord God, that we may conduct ourselves in your business in a way that you would be pleased. Father, we understand, Noah realized that the government's upon your shoulders, Lord God. We thank you that you choose to use these earth and vessels, Lord God, and we don't take it lightly. We ask that you are humble as right now, Lord God. Reduce us, that you may increase in us, that your spirit may illuminate from us, Lord God, and that we always speak the oracles of your word. In Jesus' holy, precious, and righteous name we continue to pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Most service performance, marriage support, a tiny down.
Nope.
I have more reading.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're not just here today.
Does that miss me? Do you have this? Okay. What are we passing out here, honey?
Just a talking, okay? Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay. All right. First of all, I want to give you an update on the St. James project. You know, we've been working on this for two years. A lot of time and money has gone into it. And it seems that we might really make it happen by the end of this week. There are a lot of work left to be done. We thought it was going to be like mid-April, but the lender told us last week, or told Jim Lewis, that they wanted it booked and closed this quarter, which means the end of this month, which means the end of this week. So everybody's been scrambling to try to get all the paperwork done. It's very complicated with all these documents. What has happened is the Atlanta... Well, the Atlanta lawyers on behalf of the lender have all sorts of new requirements that have come up over the last few weeks. Hilton had new requirements. They found more work that had to be done down there. And to make a long story short, a lot more money is needed than they first thought. So the lender has agreed to substantially increase their loan to get the project funded. And I don't want to go into what may be private figures in a public meeting. Go into executive session if you want, precise figure. But a substantial increase in the amount that Jim Lewis's company is going to have to borrow and put into the project. So what he is going to need, he says, to fund his project and pay this back, is a revenue sharing agreement that would involve, which is typical in these type of transactions, but it comes very late for him to ask about it now. He's asking for twenty-five percent of the sales tax proceeds and the lodging tax proceeds to be rebated to him every year for a ten-year period. There's no way you can vote on that tonight because that involves a public hearing. It's got to be published for a week in a newspaper, and your final approval would have to be after that. And we've got to look at it too because I don't know, we've got to be sure that this complies with all of your existing sales tax agreements you've got with city or the wire, whoever. But, I mean, with the city school or the wire, whoever. But basically, that's what they're asking for, which is typical in a transaction like this. You're not getting any sales taxes now, you're not getting any lodging taxes now, and it's costing you money. If we close this thing by the end of this week immediately, he ensures that he picks up utilities, he picks up everything. So this resolution draft, a resolution sharing agreement, would be the way it would end up after, assuming y'all pass it after the public notice. But you don't want to go start publishing notices unless it at least a sense that it's likely to be approved by the council. I don't know that that takes a vote necessarily, but it would be something we'd probably need to discuss now to see what your input is for the general concept.
This is equivalent to the seven-seven-two, we have to have a public hearing and all that also too, but...
Say what?
We have to have a public hearing, seven-seven-two.
Public hearing, got to be a public hearing.
MOU.
And then after that, you would vote. It'd have to be a week's notice, but no way this is going to happen before the closing. And the lender is apparently willing to say that, well, okay, we'll wait for it. But of course, he can't pay the loan back maybe if he doesn't have the revenues to do it with. But they're willing to take that risk. But again, I mean, there's no point in, you know, if there's any real objection going on, republishing the notices. I don't necessarily need a resolution, but if there's significant objection, there's no sense in publishing it. You don't, you're not ready to vote on it now, I know you're not, you just came up. But that would be the first step, and then we would go through that process. It'd be a public hearing, and then y'all would make the decision.
Also, I probably MOU, not around to understand you, but... Oh, for the bar, the MOU, not around to understand you.
I think we could do like a resolution.
Resolution.
Yeah. I think after, publish it, and then seven days, you have the hearing, and then I think you could just do a resolution.
I probably prefer that you spend that year...
A contract, yeah. Well, that would be what that is. Yeah, so it'd be like a resolution to enter into that.
All right. Council, Councilwoman Jackson?
Um, I have had an opportunity to read mostly not all of the eighteen pages of this agreement. And I'm hoping by the same day, all of nothing is still zero. Seventy-five percent of something is more than zero. And that if we've carried it, you all have told it and done the hard work this far, and he continues to want to borrow and to work with the city of Salem and to have with St. James with all of the continued difficulties there seem to be surrounding it. More money here, not realizing that there was going to be damage here. I think we had another time, we talked about mold, things of that sort. I think we should see it through fruition and see what comes out. Right now, we're not getting anything.
Councilwoman Shaw?
I concur wholeheartedly with my colleagues. I do think we're at a very crucial point with the... With the liquidation for, for, for lack of a better term, of the St. James. I think we need to move forward, and I think Mr. Gammel and his law firm, all of their hard-earned efforts in bringing us up to this point. I don't think we need to drop this ball, and I think we're moving in the right direction. And hopefully, we can go ahead and make this a final transaction soon or very soon.
Let me also say that, you know, that Jim Lewis and his company have put a lot of money into this already. And there's a lot that's still got to be done for paperwork for this week. So when I say it's supposed to close it, aside from this thing here, it's... We are very hopeful, but it's going to be, it's going to be tight. We've got a conference calling tomorrow at ten o'clock with Atlanta lawyers, with everybody, ten people, to try to work out the final details, the closing costs and so forth. And there's a lot left to be done, but we're pushing to get it done. So let's hope it, let's hope it all works. But I didn't want to leave the impression that it's totally slammed down to close it this week.
Okay, I guess what we probably, if I go to Councilwoman, then let's look over, and if we need to call a special meeting, you mind if we move forward, move forward? Go ahead.
I do think, Mr. President, because the document is method, very worded. To be fair to my colleagues, I do think we do need to go into executive session tomorrow to answer any of their concern as relates to that document. And I think once that is done, then we'll go ahead and do what we want to do.
Well, I asked them when I talked to them last week, could you come to the council meeting, say we try? So...
Jim Leonard?
Yeah, that's last week.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yeah, I didn't think it was slammed on, it was going to be slammed on either. So I just want to clarify that you're saying, give twenty-five percent of the sales tax for ten years and the lodging tax for ten years.
Seventy-five percent goes to the city, twenty-five percent at the end of the year would be rebated to him.
Yeah, that's what I said, twenty-five percent of the sales tax, twenty-five percent.
That's what he's, that's what he's proposing.
All right. And then I do have questions that are executive meeting-type questions.
She has questions, but she'll ask them tomorrow in the executive session.
When he appears.
Yeah, with Jim.
Yeah.
We need to make sure.
Yeah, make sure that I, we talked about it.
He hasn't told me he was coming, but we'll talk to him.
Yeah, I talked to him.
He's willing to come, I mean, he's got to come here to close this transaction. But I mean, y'all are meeting on Thursday when it's set. He's got a ton of papers, including a major promissory note guaranteed. But, yeah, he can come, and it's going to be a public hearing. And y'all are going to have the opportunity to turn it down if you want to. And again, we just got this, the people that drafted this are the lawyers in Burnham that represent the SRA, that do this kind of work, that know how to draft these tax related things. And we just got it from them. And we and I still need to go through it too. We haven't totally approved this document. But the essence of it is, is a twenty-five percent rebate, just like you said. That's the whole substance of it, there's fifteen pages of language in here. But, so, all we're saying, you know, tonight is, are you comfortably going forward with publishing and public notice so that a decision can be made after that happens?
The attorney's the same, the same attorney's been involved in this process as far as incentives and stuff like that from another past project we had?
Well, Alabama Power, the original attorney that started with...
Yes, sir, I know who it is, I was just trying not to use all those names, but it's Alex?
Alex, Alex was hired by the Power Company as the house counsel.
Right, right.
So he left the Voltsch and Biggum firm, they turned it over to Lee Johnson.
Okay.
We've been, last week, he, they had, he was on spring break with his children in Orlando at Disney World, and he's been working while he's down there sending the stuff. He's got another lawyer named Dan Ruth working on it too in Burnham. And see, they do this kind of stuff. They're the ones that drafted this document. And so it's similar to what Law Lewis has been asking for, they never got around to doing it, I guess. But this is a fairly sophisticated document. But they say, look, you know, the first step is to have a public notice. Then the council can consider and vote on it. But you don't want to go on with your public notice unless the council at least willing to go forward and consider it.
Well, I think...
I don't have a problem with that.
Like I say, I don't have a problem with that. It'd be really, at this point, we're closer than we ever have been, is finally getting rid of this albatross, so it'd be nice to... Where we got to get rid of the albatross, as long as you're not telling us he was a hundred percent, I don't, you know, it's fine with me. He didn't ask for fifty, which I thought he was going to ask for fifty, so that's good, twenty-five, fifty, just setting by that.
You tend to need a resolution just to go forward with it.
No, I don't think. Want this thing done.
We have to draft it.
Do we have to vote on that?
We have to.
These lawyers tell...
Not tonight, I'm not...
It's basically tomorrow, after executive session, after whatever concerns my colleagues have as it relates to that eighteen-page document, whether Jim is here or not, I think the attorney, once they review, they will be able to give us some legal guidance as to whatever our concerns are. And then, then at the same meeting, we can, if the vote is to move forward, then we can give the vote to go ahead and move forward.
So really, the essence is whether to move forward or not. That's the vote?
But we can't vote on it.
I'm not talking about tonight.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah. I'm not talking about, I mean, I know you can't vote on it.
You can't vote on it tomorrow.
Can't.
It's just got to be voted.
Yeah.
I'm talking about to move forward.
To move, we can move.
Vote, vote, to move forward.
The only thing to move forward is just to publish it.
Vote to publish it.
That's what I'm talking about, just to move forward, yeah.
Why don't we just consent that?
Yes.
I asked the attorney, you know, how does this normally handle? He said, normally the councils don't even vote, they just say, okay, it's enough that we just go ahead and publish it. But...
I think we need to make a call.
But I wouldn't want to do that.
Send it in, Mr. President, is there a question?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
So I didn't think there was a disagreement about the public hearing at all. I thought we were just going to publish the public hearing. I didn't think anyone disagreed about there needs to be a public hearing, like, period. But I would like to know the rest of your opinion after you yourselves have been thoroughly read through the document that you are advising us on, so that's what I want to know.
Absolutely. But, so, you know, Mr. President, I don't, I don't think, I mean, I think the consensus is...
It is clear.
I don't think you need another meeting.
Let's do it.
Any other questions?
Tomorrow, though, you still want to possibly go into executive session if Jim can come, is that right?
Yes.
Well, he's going to have to come down Thursday.
But they won't be...
Oh, they won't come down Thursday? Well, the logistics of signing all these papers work.
Well, basically, I guess, I don't know, maybe we just go into the executive session, I don't think we're talking about that, just to move forward, just to...
That's all you're doing, I mean, he's got, he's got, he's got so much on his plate to just make close.
What's happening between you and I, right?
He'll be with you, but I mean, it's, y'all can address that.
Between you and I, that's me.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you for all that.
Thank you.
I know y'all making a fortune off this.
We're getting it working.
I'll be facetious, Mr. Jim.
Any other questions for...
Yes, since we have, uh, Mr. Jackson, Attorney Jones.
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 Just give me, just give me permission to call you, just give me permission to call you Woody like anybody else. Come on up, Attorney Jones.
All right, are you ready to leave, let me go?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I feel that we need to make a call.
I'm on the hot seat now, Harry.
You build us in the increments of thirty minutes, don't you?
No. And tonight, I told Harry, he's on the clock, not tonight, I'm not on the clock tonight. I'm here to support him, but I won't answer...
What I'm doing is, since you asked me to call, I will just rest, I'll call. I will return your call, how about that?
No, but we, but just, we do bill at one tenth of an hour, so six minutes, so a lot better than thirty minutes.
Which means we have to...
This is what you're questioning. Yeah, you and I have been trying to get together.
No, I'm going to...
Now we got this part right here? Hello, 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 hello.
No, I'm going to return your call, since you asked me to call you.
Yeah.
I am going to return your...
And I can be available, I'll be here all week, so I'll be available.
All right.
Is it? Y'all may have other questions.
You know, I had talked to, I had talked to Mayor and the attorney, none of whom left. There's a problem that I've been dealing with for the longest, and that is with that Ward Five voting precinct located in Ward Six. It is immensely confusing to people. I need that box moved, quick, fast, and in a hurry, because...
And that's Councilwoman Reddall?
That's Councilwoman Reddall. And of course, you know, we have to stay within the rules of the lower south boundaries.
Right.
You know, thinking the other parts is, some high school, am I correct, Mr. President?
Yeah.
And frankly, if you remove that range there precincts to Edgewood, I think he'll be within the legal dis... The both precincts. It, I mean, this, this...
It's the range, which one is it?
The range there. This has caused mass confusion.
I believe it.
And people do not deserve that type of confusion.
Not this.
And for the city to continue to have allowed that to happen, it's just sad.
We have another place in...
Well, I'm going to, Councilwoman Reddall, and we are talking about this previously. I had suggested to him that you look at Edgewood as the ultimate precinct, because it's going to be tied up to him. I just want it out of my war.
Yeah.
Because it's confusing to...
Yeah, I agree.
Okay?
Yeah, I'll look into how we do that, and we'll figure out another place and all that.
Any other questions for Attorney? Councilwoman, you okay? Councilwoman Thomas?
I talked.
Any other questions? All right?
Oh, y'all.
You can stay at your seat there.
Thank you, Attorney.
That was two minutes, five minutes, two minutes, five minutes, four minutes.
Good.
They just took me...
Takes an hour, six minutes.
They just took me to the ground there.
Okay. Before we go to our business partners, I pass out two resolutions for the council consideration for tomorrow. First, resolution one-twenty-four, that's eighteen-nineteen, for concession stay of bid. I talked with Mrs. Harrison, proud to coming up here, and from my understanding that the bid, she used to go out in January, and she explained to me that due to the fact that the season won't start until April, the second week of April, and some of the logistical things that took place, that's why she was just giving it out, I mean, getting all the heads out. So what I asked Miss Harrison to do is to compile the list of everyone who was mailed the bids for the concession stay. As you can see, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven bids that were sent out, and only one bid that was returned.
What was the, what was the date the bid was set out? Not seeing it.
I'm going to relook, March...
It's the dates that you say when they're listed.
I probably need to ask about that.
Now, see, this says fourteen, and this says twenty-five.
Twenty-five, oh, so March twenty... I guess the individual, the last two, that she mailed up individuals, I think it was on twenty-five.
Didn't even give them a month's response time?
Yeah, I thought usually leave about a month.
Yeah, I mean, because you got to get it, you got to act on it.
Didn't have to look through it through them?
Right, spring break, get cost.
Yeah, and so now we're looking at, you know, only one bid.
And the dollar figure's gone down, even though the money they're supposed to be making is going up. That don't make no sense.
That's what you call an invoice of fifty.
So, Mr. President...
We got too many of those in the city of Salem.
Go ahead.
Some of these people actually requested to be mailed a bid packet.
Yes.
And were saying they were not interested after they received the pack.
I guess, yeah, only one...
From the fourteenth to twenty-fifth.
Yeah, only one individual should live at the bid. And in my opinion, I just wish there was...
I want it to lie.
In a timely manner, because usually when you did, there was a bid process, at least about a month.
Yeah.
I know it turn around, turn around time, so, and I know the season starts the second week in April, not in September.
Which is, I guess, what, it's a quick turnaround time, please?
Yeah.
Yeah, Councilwoman Thomas? Also, too, before we, I think we need to also require to see all the sales tests that's submitted by the... If this is the same group that...
Last year.
Last year, I think we need to also check to see what's the sales tax submitted and everything prior to moving forward.
And has the education facility, which this person sits, paid their dues, the stadium they were up?
Okay.
Standing bill, like last time?
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yeah, I have a question there.
Look, look, Governor, go ahead.
Yeah, with all the several people on here that bid for this package, only one, so she just received one of the packing?
Yes.
And this is what we're going to do? You're doing a resolution on this based on him?
Yes, ma'am, just one bid.
Copy of the bid sheet.
Oh, because, yes, maybe...
No, I mean, there's no copy of what she sent down to get the bid. There's no origination sheet saying, you want to mail this, here's information...
I need to ask you.
No, that's really a big deal, I just like to see the date. And I'm...
Councilman Johnson?
Uh, Mr. President, I, you mentioned to take a, a bid to be out in a month. And I totally agree with, you know, right now, with our work the second week. Right now, we don't have enough workers, and I think it's our stress to the mat. And I, you know, we have to understand they're doing the best they can when they need a little help in the office, you know? So right now, it's just, I don't know, but we need to try to think out a way to get some employees back, work some kind of, you know? But these employees stressed, I mean, they're really wired up and doing the best they can, so... But whatever we need to do is give them more time, we're the, but, I ain't talking about, you know, because she wired up, I just...
Yeah, she don't want to wire.
That's my point, that's my point, so that's exactly, you're right.
Okay, do a split?
Councilwoman Thomas?
I did have a little question, tipped it to Tom, but he cut me off, but I'll skip that.
Go ahead.
I talked to him.
Any other, I mean, so what's the consensus on this, on this resolution here?
One bid, which means...
Candy checking the, uh...
Oh, I can see, yeah, yeah.
Right, candy, right, baby.
Candy, yeah.
Checking the sales tax.
Right.
And so, and so that we don't, we don't have the questions or the confusion about the same process that we have had for the last few years, we need to make sure all these, I'm looking at the addresses. All these people received, received what we said we mailed to them.
Let me find out what date it was made.
And the date it was mailed.
Yeah, I definitely need to find out, also to make sure...
That is the confusion every year?
Also make sure everyone received it and mailed at the time of the mail.
Do we mail these certificates regular?
I think we may be to start doing certified mail.
Because every year someone comes up and says...
Someone comes up and says, they did not receive it.
Receive or know about the being.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Do we require that this is paid upfront? Because it's been brought to my attention that it has not been paid a full amount that was contracted because there was a rainy season, and I need to know if we're going to give this amount, amount at the moment is awarded, are we going to receive a check for this full amount? How does that work?
It's thundering, I have to go to work. I was, Mr. President, I was under the impression, whatever bid they submitted, well, it'd be...
That's wrong, don't be strong, and they have to put it, if they didn't put it, can't...
Yeah, but anything else, Councilwoman?
Right, I just wanted to make sure that we got this bound...
We need to make sure it's upfront.
Upfront and not in the back end, because they stated, and it was prior to me coming, this council, but it was stated that they were able to renegotiate and get it at a lower price. but it was stated that they were able to renegotiate and then get it at a lower price, so we need to make sure that doesn't happen.
It's already prepaid.
And this is something that was brought to my attention regarding this matter, that's why I asked about it the last time, um, and so I don't know, I haven't looked it up, so I'm just...
Might gonna put that in the contract that...
Right, that is, it should be paid any advance.
Councilwoman Thomas?
And that's why I had asked, uh, I was gonna ask you, I had asked the clerk. Yes, that was my question, because I wanted to ask the clerk to go back for the last three years to pull the contract up with these vendors that operate this, uh, and I haven't, I, for some reason, I haven't got it, uh, maybe.
Maybe I should have put my brother on here.
Well, you know, when you, I just asked.
Oh, no, did you really, did you? You did, it, that was, I, it took me a second to answer, wow. What expect now, I have his left hand, right hand, bang, left hand, wow. Did it have a gun, anybody else have a gun? I could see a gun, that was good.
I felt good.
Okay, any other questions? We'll just put on the sun jumper tomorrow and move.
Let it go. Alright.
Also, but please, uh, please check with the clerk or whoever's in charge of this mail out. Because if not, we're gonna be fooled with, uh, citizens' concerns, as usual.
Also, this resolution, R one twenty-five, just wanted to, uh, March is, uh, Women's Kitchen Week. Just wanted to thank all the beautiful women for the work that you do around the world, and every month should be Women's Kitchen Week.
Oh.
But, uh, March is designated...
Oh.
But March is designated for, so we do have a resolution that we're gonna vote on tomorrow, uh, to move forward with it.
Seven days?
Cause seven days, yes. And Sacred Sanctuary, uh, they're gonna be having in the morning.
They already get less than thirty, though. Which is not for going to consent that.
Oh, no, we have to consent in the morning, they just have to let us know, uh, we'll have to vote on it no longer.
Are they, are they, are they asking, what were they asking for exactly? Just for permission to have it?
Just have it.
Well, forgiveness is that, it's easier than permission.
Okay, that's fine. Alright, now to the...
I asked you, Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Before you go, uh, the council society, um, they asked for...
From National Cancer Society.
Asked, they thought it was anybody's.
Sponsorship, relay the light.
We didn't have it, we didn't have a, a sheet, we didn't get a sheet.
Miss, I have a question in relation to that. Is that from Ms. Martha, it's from Adrian, okay. The, if, if I can tag on to that, I have filled out the paperwork to do, to have sponsoring for, for them to have a convention center, relay the light, and have masquerade ball, doesn't that sound fun? Or, um, Alvin Craig is had that up, since the chairman, and I had told her that, wait...
He just did one, didn't he?
When?
He did one for the pink.
About a year.
Well, well, I remember Pink did it in Moscow.
Well, honey, every year, they have, it's time, it's time.
It's a different, it's a different thing, that's what I'm saying, but I appreciate it.
American Cancer Society.
Yeah, no, it just, it's the, rest of cancer wearers month is one of the...
Oh, okay, but anyway.
And Alvin's good at that, that's why I was laughing about Alvin doing it.
He is very good at it, but anyway, anyway, so, and I had told her, you know, I asked her if, if, if they were working on the same house, and she said yes. So I just wanted to make y'all aware of that too, because, um, I was, I'm, I'm gonna be ringing that, you know, as well for the council as soon as we get the dags nailed down. I had gone and done that, but I think he's calling Ms. Davis about getting a different day and stuff, but, but anyway, masquerade ball, it's gonna be fun.
Uh, we didn't, we didn't get the different days and all that, um, yeah, I'm a freshman member, I knew we, I know we brought the contract up with the blank lines in it for buildings. Has, has it, has it not been passed? Because people are saying that they're being told there are no bookings, there are gonna be no bookings, and so...
I got told that.
Did we not put this on the list?
That does make sense.
Time to get rid of the bar.
Councilwoman Thomas?
And we don't need a committee meeting again for the same thing.
We, well, we, we got the, um, the information here, Andrew, I'll give you one of this.
Are we gonna vote on this tomorrow? Did we vote on this?
I thought we were gonna, did we put it on first week?
We basically had to go back and make some corrections, and...
He got it.
They made it.
They've made it.
They made it.
I'm giving to Councilwoman Thomas, we have one or two choices, we can put it on the consent, or we can just put it in your committee. I mean, you can vote for it, I mean, bring it up in your committee.
Consent it, consent to this side.
You need to know something that, 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 that...
Tell me about changes.
Well, can I tell you the changes in there?
Yes, ma'am.
We didn't have a committee meeting yet because of the attorney, ma'am, had a talk. They sent, uh, there are some changes in there, if anyone, uh, rents this, this building, they're gonna have to have their own insurance.
Well, that's standard.
Yeah, that's what we said.
And then, uh-huh, and then, and he said that you would have to, you would be responsible, there's some things that y'all could be, but I'm, we just vote on it tomorrow, you know, just have to let them.
I think it's only a hundred dollars for, uh, for the insurance for the...
We need to have it. Whatever he said.
Yeah, plus, eight is a hundred dollars.
Wasn't there a five hundred dollar security deposit in there?
No.
Was it?
It was a security deposit.
The question I...
It's a change, so everybody gonna get a look at it, and y'all make it...
Sounds like stuff we didn't discuss, you guys didn't know?
The question I have is, who's gonna determine whether or not that, that security deposit is refunded or not? In other words, who's gonna go in there and ascertain the situation was either done or not done to keep the, the security deposit back?
Everything in there is, is...
I, I don't think that was addressed in the original contract, but do you know if it was addressed?
Come out in the committee meeting, can you email it, Mr. President?
We have, we, we have discussed this. We were supposed to have another meeting when he got through the changes.
I know, but when we had a meeting, we didn't ask him to put all that in there.
No, the mayor did.
We asked who?
Can I say you something?
Who did?
Can I tell you what Woody told me? The attorney told me that he spoke, him and the mayor, they...
It's just the contract.
They talked about, they went by the, 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 you know, the original contract? He said that he met with the mayor, and, uh, they talked about, you know, the, the changes in the contract. And, uh, he said that, that the mayor was, after what they needed to do in there, was fine with that. And then, he told me, he told Cory that Cory was supposed to gave me the changes. He said, it's a little different, and it's like a little fee and everything, and, uh, I said, well, we never had this meeting yet with the committee to see it.
Where does the difference with the fee? Uh... It's five, I mean, because I know we, we have said two fifty for, uh, the cost for cleanup.
No, five hundred.
Oh.
I think it's five hundred, how?
It was five hundred, but I think it's two fifty.
It's gonna change, I'll speak on it.
Okay, so I'm on the committee, and, and what I'm saying is, when y'all are discussing now, they not come out of the committee, nor with all the recommendation when the, when the attorney was actually here. So what I thought was coming forth was what we asked to be done to the contract, which was something simple, and now we're still talking a whole lot of bureaucracy now, like a red tape forever, and so now, I need to read it. I, I thought, I thought it was just the recommendations in the contract, so now I need to read this.
My suggestion is right here.
Please email it to me.
It's still the same, but they just use five hundred dollars for a deposit for cleanup. We just go back to two fifty.
Look at that.
And just move forward.
New, uh, this is the one.
Give me emails now.
Just go back to two fifty?
Yeah, I, I, in my own terms, if it's five hundred, then who's gonna make that decision? Because I've seen city buildings left in disarray where I wouldn't fund anybody.
Yeah. I would just say, you know, here, it has five hundred, uh, deposit for cleanup, rounds, since we worked that for two fifty?
Well, Ms. Davis definitely the one needing to, Mr. President, to go back to, to inspect the building, uh, since they know the building, whether they should get reformed or not.
Yeah.
I think it's what leaving to Ms. Ethel, Ms. Minetti, and Ms. Davis, whatever it is.
I like that.
I don't, he just asked, I understand.
From my understanding, two fifty, uh, but when I look at it, it's five hundred.
Oh, he... Councilwoman Thomas is saying there's something missing that we need to read.
Anything else?
Well, I, I have my head with you just too much.
See, I'm, I'm, I tagged up, you know, in the recommendation, I was trying to pull them up, um, because, as you stated, it's not what you recommended.
It wasn't, it, but I'm trying to tell y'all, that's what the attorney told me to, today, outside, and he said, if it's something in there that you and the committee disagree about, get back with him.
We can't immediately.
When I, I scheduled a meeting for this week, but, uh, we hadn't had it, he had already drawn up.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess you need to go and call the meeting immediately, I guess this might be Carol.
It was this week, it was after council, it was Wednesday.
Okay, there's no need to put it on the sun jumper, then, take a roll to the next meeting.
It was Wednesday, we were supposed to have.
Okay.
So until such stuff is handled, it's operating with the previous contract regulations.
Yeah. Wow.
No, they're not gonna take anything.
They're not gonna take anything.
They're not gonna take anything until this is passed, which is why we wanted that simple thing replaced, so that people can, we can start taking that money, and people can start booking the bills, so if, like, if you call tomorrow, they're gonna say, we are not booking.
We don't need money, because we're gonna sit there and wait till the end of the budget year, then we're gonna throw a bunch of money at a building we've been in the entire time, because we didn't do our job and allocate the money where needed to be, and then we're gonna sit there and pay, that person sit there and tell us we can't rebuild it.
Yeah.
We're gonna pay department heads, sit in departments, don't have anybody sitting in there, so they can make a fast out, or everybody else bust their butt, and we're gonna insulate them, and park for wreck, we can't get anymore people parked for wreck.
We, if, if we're not renting out buildings, why do we have two people sitting over there?
And that's what I...
Building, if that's not what we're doing, I...
Why do we have a department head sitting in an apartment and have people in it?
Guys, let me remind you that we're out of our lane.
That's right.
And what I have always learned...
Even though the person just went from left lane all the way across eight lanes and clipped the front end of my car, and I was trying to drive a mile.
No. Whenever you get outside your lane...
I'm gonna take a shot. Gonna take a Johnson body shot to the front.
Give me a big deal, because I'm popping it out my way.
But, 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 all jokes aside, it's gonna be no one involved if you go to a committee, it's gonna be changed.
Well, because we have... He's given the committee what you have, that Woody gave, let them, you got to...
I would be able to tell you, because I, I didn't look at it, yeah, I will, because I was, I was...
You have a property to run it off, or would you like...
Would you like a meeting to forward the, the little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, because, because that's, that's all I'm concerned with. What we want, that's all I'm concerned with.
Yeah, I'd like to see that and an email of the...
You know how y'all say we meet in committees for a reason, and we bring the light dash for a reason, that's all I'm concerned with.
Well, I...
What did you say, you would like to proceed?
The, the, the copy of those, just so I can see what they were, and then so I can look at the document in front of me and say, okay.
I'll give it to everybody.
I trust the committee judge with a hundred percent.
Yeah, they're about to be changing stuff, man, why, why we be here?
That's what I say.
I, I would be able to, because I do have...
Only one person change some.
But see, this is what, uh, I thought President Woody said, when he puts up in the committee, it's for the committee to have, and the committee was, we did make that decision, but after we made the decision with what we talked about, you were listening on the phone, but after we made that decision, did the recommendation, but then the, the attorney took it, uh, ring, I don't, to the mayor, and the mayor... Start changing, so this is why I say, what is the purpose of the committee? If we discuss some, and then...
What's for us?
And then we take, they take any changes.
I mean, I mean, I look at this, uh, the information, or I didn't really change it till you just informed me coming up.
I'm concerned with the committee's recommendation. We did a recommendation, but that's it.
Mark, business items, Councilwoman Jackson?
Okay, so I'm just going to, you know, five forty-six, I usually try to rush through my financial monitoring, uh, but this is so important that I don't feel like it needs to be, uh, rushed through. Everyone received a copy of their budget performance report on, um, prior to the last work session. And so, um, we received it like three thirty, the work session started at five o'clock, I didn't have the opportunity to review it the way I would like to. Um, but I've gone back since our financial committee meeting, where I told the, um, chief of police that I would look at other options and solutions for them getting the vehicles that they would need, um, to, to make sure that the officers knew that the council was doing everything that we did and working diligently to provide for them, but we were also in being financially responsible. Um, so, let's take a moment and look at, um, our sales tax report, let's, let's start there. So sales taxes are down five hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, lodging tax are down by sixteen thousand dollars. You, do your, some of y'all writing down, you gonna get exact numbers, one oh five seven thirty-three sixty-seven. If you look at, um, the difference in January, February, January was, sales tax was down thirty-five thousand, seven hundred seventeen dollars and seventy-seven cents. February was down seventy-one thousand dollars, seventy-one thousand four eight twenty-eight. And so, we're, we're looking at decreasing sales tax, decreasing lodging tax. Um, tobacco tax is relatively the same, there's no decrease. I can see taxes down, that's where we divide, um, the funding between YMCA and the Brown LCA. About, down about two thousand dollars, five thousand dollars year to date, uh, two thousand last month, but not too bad. So the half set sales tax, of course, if you know sales tax is down, then you realize that the half set sales tax is down as well, and it's down about thirteen thousand dollars thus far. Um, I simplified, so you say, I'd like to simply call it the, uh, online tax, um, is actually relatively the same. And so, I took an opportunity to go through those, because my, um, debate argument, my stance with the, the council is that we cannot afford to purchase, um, these vehicles over five years. Um, the hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars that we presented with, over five years, is actually two hundred and five thousand dollars that we were spending. And I just don't believe that we have that much over five years, looking at, um, what I've seen thus far. So, I, um, told some, um, those of you all that attended the financial committee meeting, that I actually had, um, was informed that Jackson County had built, um, twenty fourteen, twenty ten, and twenty fourteen, more than sixty-five thousand miles, um, in really good shape. There were chargers for twenty-five hundred dollars, two thousand five hundred dollars, and they had five left by the time that I was made, where Wilcox County purchased seven from them, and they, um, the total of their purchase was thirty-five, thirty-seven hundred dollars? Don't quote me on that, because I don't have my paper wrote down, but it was three thousand some dollars. Um, so, but they were able to buy seven vehicles. Um, I've talked to the, um, acting chief, um, because acting last week, the chief was out, and so I spoke to the officer in Wilcox County Sheriff, um, David, uh, however you call it, I'm sorry, um, and he informed me the most that they had to do was things that they did on their lot themselves, um, the office. Um, and so he said they were really good vehicles, they drove them back, they're working well, and so certainly seemed to be happy with their purchase. I asked the chief about that, and he stated that he found out about it too late. Um, when I found out on, about it on Thursday, I called, and they told me that they had actually sold the vehicles on Tuesday. And so Monday night, when we were here seeking, uh, solutions, that this could have been one, and, um, I, I, so I spoke with the individuals. I had, before I even called to secure the vehicles, um, I had five business owners ready to purchase all of the vehicles at no cost to the city. So I presented that to the, to the chief, he said that he would look into other options, and he had informed me today that he's gone back to Jackson County, and, let me quote him, because I don't want to misrepresent anything. So I sent him a text earlier, asking to speak with him. "Good morning, chief, this is Mie Jackson, will you please give me a call in reference to the proposed policy?" And he takes me back at three forty-six, he said, "Councilwoman Jackson, I'm finishing and continuing," I'm thinking he's saying ed class, "today, I will call you tonight at first thing in the AM, we did find used Tahoe from Jackson PD for five hundred dollars. It is worth twenty times that much." And I said, "Glory to God, I'm looking forward to hearing from you, I may have a couple of options as well." He said, "That sounds great, thanks."
Good.
And so, wh- what I would like for us to consider as a body is explore... And so, wh- what I would like for us to consider as a body is exploring those options and exploring the community assisting us. Before we actually will purchase six vehicles over five years at a cost of not a hundred and seventy three thousand dollars, but two hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, and so I'm asking that you all consider that. Let's look at our budget performance report, the chief stated that, um, they had a line item for vehicle repairs of seventy five thousand dollars. Um, based on this report, it's sixty thousand. He stated that they used a hundred and eleven thousand last year on repairs, based on this report, it's ninety two thousand. Um, the, the mayor asserted in his last, um, meeting that most of the invoice that we discussed, I have the, um, the purchase orders for a hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars, does anyone remember that, that paperwork? Okay, he stated that most of it was, um, public safety repairs, is that correct?
That's what he said.
I wanna make sure that I'm, I'm saving that correctly, is that what you all told me?
I wasn't here.
But he said.
Does anybody else remember that? Okay, so, okay, all right, so I went back and looked at the purchase order agreement, so we're looking at purchase orders specifically. Um, of a hundred and thirty seven thousand, four hundred and ninety two dollars, but I went back over those purchase orders, and that doesn't appear to be the case. And it's about fifty five thousand, let me pull that up, it's on my computer, so I have, bring it out. So it's about fifty five thousand dollars that, out of the hundred and thirty seven thousand that belongs to the PD. But forty thousand, six hundred and seventy one dollars and five cents, I remember that, um, is actually for new computer equipment, vehicle computer equipment. Um, I know that's way over five thousand, and people keep saying, don't, they're supposed to bring anything over five thousand. But I keep saying, when we vote it, and everything is supposed to come before the council, um, but there's a purchase order that they have for that amount. And so out of the fifty five thousand, forty thousand is actually for this new equipment. And then, so we're looking at approximately another fifteen thousand, and then we have K nine, K nine, um, various fees and things of that sort. So it's not even a total of fifteen thousand, that's for, um, vehicle equipment repairs. That's just based on this report, now it may have changed, because that was two weeks ago, but based on this report and his assertion that the hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars was mostly, um, repairs for, um, public safety. That's, that doesn't bring to the factual, based on the information that I looked at, and we all have a copy of it, and so you all can go back through and look in for yourselves if you don't quite trust my assessment. But I've taken a lot of time to go over it. Hold on one second. All right, um, and so let's then look at the communications and repairs budget that's in their line item. Um, and I, when I say there, I'm saying the police department, which is fifty nine thousand dollars. If this is probably where they've chosen to purchase this new, um, equipment. Uh, because it's the forty thousand, six seventy one oh five is, um, in this line item for being encumbered, um, last month. So maybe this is where they've chosen to get this information or this money from. But still the same, it's not vehicle equipment actually, and maybe they're suggesting that the computers are down, or they need new computers, I don't know. But it's just not going to long loom as reliable or, um, any of the other service centers that, that we've been told that they're attempting because the cars are breaking down on the side of the road. So I want, I want us to consider all those things additionally, nine thousand, don't forget, wait a minute. So fifty five thousand is what we're looking at, forty thousand is directly for new, um, I won't quote them exactly, new computer. Um, vehicle computer equipment, is what it says on, on the report. Then we have another nine thousand, nine hundred dollars that looks as if an air conditioner was replaced. Um, and so the fifty five thousand.
Air conditioner.
Okay, so, uh, but I'm, I'm just going off what we were told that the hundred and thirty three thousand dollars was vehicle repairs. Um, and it just doesn't really.
Does that include the fire department too, or this is police department?
I just looked at the fire department.
Police department.
Police department, I'm sorry, excuse me, the police department, we were discussing the police department, my debate, my argument, my stance was, we couldn't afford it, and so I went back to look at the police department. Because we're looking at their budget to get the money from, is that correct? So that's, that's why I did that. Yes, nine thousand, actually it's a nine thousand dollar even number, labor and materials, police departments, and this air conditioner. Um, so, um, and then we have other things, like, let me, let me tell you some of the equipment that we have. So we have a local vendor for nineteen ninety nine, maybe that's an oil channel.
Nineteen dollars.
Nineteen dollars and ninety nine cents.
For what?
It just says repair police department, repair.
Might have to keep on with the oil channel.
Well, maybe, and, and, you know, it doesn't give me very much. So, um, and then we have something for vaccination for the K nine, one seventy two, and, um, three thirty one for vaccination for the K nine. And vehicle maintenance, um, one twenty six oh, one twenty six oh two, vehicle maintenance, vehicle repair, we do have one five oh eight, um, sixty four. And so what I'm telling you is, and we have a note, repair for one fifty nine ninety five, not suggesting that they're not repairs, those are not repairs that are needed. Only stating that when we were informed that this was the case that I had found it to be. Now, maybe the case next one, but it's currently not the case. So let's look at, um, the data processing, um, expense, we got twenty eight thousand dollars in that budget. Um, we didn't use that much last year, and so there may be some, um, in line item that we can get some funding from. I told you it was gonna be a minute on this one. So also I found that we got a fixed assets over five thousand dollars, we have, we only spent last year twenty one thousand dollars in fixed assets. Um, but we have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars budget. So I'm, I'm thinking to myself, if we're going to go in a long lease and we're going to purchase vehicles, there's a hundred and sixty dollars right now. Let's purchase it before the, the lease is over, because we're gonna spend approximately thirty one thousand dollars in interest over those five years, we can purchase another vehicle. I mean, the, the sedans are twenty four thousand, you gotta accept it for thirty two and thirty three thousand. But we only used twenty one thousand in fixed assets over, over five thousand dollars last year, based on the report, and we budgeted a hundred and sixty thousand this year. So if we're going to open up and say we need to get these six new units, let's open it up and pay for it. Outside this year, based on the budget. Um, uh, also, and I asked the young ladies down in the finance department, um, fixed assets to kind of explain that. And they said that the, the vehicles couldn't be considered a fixed asset, I don't know if that's actually a fixed asset, because I thought it was gonna have to stay still, but hey, we can use it or, or we can do a budget amendment. Um, so I want to give you all that option. And I don't know what interest expense is, um, in the police department, but we have sixty eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty six dollars in that account, and we used nothing last year. So that's almost seventy dollars, seventy thousand dollars that, based on those two line items alone, we could pay for it. We can pay for these new vehicles this year, um, if we want, and, and not incur that cost. Now, my position would be, let's wait, maybe we can find some more five hundred dollar vehicles, um, maybe they will actually come through with that grant. Um, but we do need to hold off a minute, um, before we do that. Also, I wanted, let's, let's look at public works, I looked at public works. And there, we have, um, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for, um, repairs, I don't know why we need that. With those new vehicles, we definitely don't need a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but they've only used, um, right now about ten thousand dollars, so there's some money there. And then additionally.
That money you called in, that money was supposed to be, you know, we said that a hundred and, the money that was in public work, since we leased the vehicles. Remember we said we, they were taking that money, putting it in appropriate, unappropriately.
Unappropriately funded.
Yeah, that's what that money right there, you just read off, some of the mon, the money that you was reading off, some of that money was supposed to be placed in that pool. So what happened, why is it not, when we voted and agreed in the budget to do it, do it with that money?
We voted, they did not spend anything, this is coming for the council, but they continue to spend.
Didn't we, and, I mean, said, Ms. Councilwoman Bigman, didn't we, didn't we go through the budget?
Yeah, you were asking me, and I shook my head, yes.
And then now the money's being put back.
Yes.
Who, who authorized us to, to place it back into the department head?
Okay.
You want me to ask again?
Yes.
So, um, I, um, as I said, that there's a hundred and twenty thousand there, less than public works. Uh, we also have two hundred and twenty two thousand, five hundred and thirty two dollars in public works for fixed assets over five thousand dollars. Um, currently, last year, we only used sixty seven thousand dollars the entire year. But thus far this year, we've used, um, year-to-date transaction, a hundred and seventy four thousand, seven hundred and ninety nine dollars. So that may be for the purchase of our new vehicles, um, we've used there for our fixed assets, but we still have a hundred and twenty thousand over there. So I just thought, um, looking through this, I told the chief that when I would look at other options, he said, hey, if we can't find this, we need these vehicles, look at other options. So these are some options for you to go to fixed assets and look at that hundred and sixty thousand dollars that's in there, that, and they, they haven't used any money at this point. Zero dollars and zero cents has been used all year, and they only used twenty one thousand last year. And so there may be a, a way that we can go in and, and purchase those vehicles right out without incurring long-term debt, and then again, the, um, interest expense at sixty eight thousand dollars. One last thing from my, um, financial monitoring. I spoke with, with local dealers, and they haven't had an opportunity to bid on these vehicles. Some can't bid because they don't offer the cruisers, some, um, have been told that they're gonna have other options available to them. And one in particular, our four dealer, I spoke with, um, Long Lewis, and they presented a letter, um, Mr. President, requesting that we delay our vote, um, until they have an opportunity to at least bid. They're here in our, in our community, and they, they wondered where the, what's going on, and they would like to be included in the process.
Who?
Long Lewis.
So the cars, they keep coming out of my name?
Yeah, coming from styros, um, but they would like an opportunity to at least be in on the, wherever the item. And we do have four local four dealerships that have chosen to come into our community.
Okay, councilwoman Thomas, councilwoman Lashore, councilwoman Yelena, councilwoman Ben. What do we count it right, he tried to tours, right? Fords?
Four, yes, and, and the chief actually has on here three, um, sedans, so they're, they're stating on, on Lewis, that they're probably tours. Um, based on the information that they've been able to obtain and the interceptors, so.
Councilwoman Thomas.
I like to go back to the, uh, I look, I had questions about the forty thousand dollars that was spent, because the reason why I had questions about the forty thousand dollars.
Let's, let's not say it's been spent yet, if it wasn't, you got a purchase order.
Okay, the purchase order for the forty thousand that they had on there, that the chief said they had used. Uh, you, you, we remember that, uh, we, we each gave like, uh, five thousand dollars of our distribution there. To use for, uh, things that, uh, the police department needs, like, uh, those, uh, what's that?
Taser.
Taser vests, and, uh, and I think he's saying that, well, I asked him a question, because it was, it was frustrating, that we did not know where this money that we gave up that was spent. And the chief made a statement, he said, that might be, he didn't know that we had given the money. He did not know that he had, that the council had, had, had given up this money to be used. And he said, that might be where he used the forty thousand that we have on here saying that was spent. He said, it might have been used for to buy those items that he needed in, uh, in the police department. So I think that this here. Mm-hmm, that's so, that my thing with this here is that we need to know if, uh, the forty five thousand being used toward the police department, is, is this, there somewhere sitting. We each gave five thousand dollars of at the time of, when it was really needed. And by him saying, he did not know that, uh, the council had, had given that to, to the police department.
To us to make to, uh, councilwoman Lashore.
Our, our police department is falling apart as we speak. You had made, mentioned in your presentation earlier about the possibility of acquiring some Dodge cruisers, and the chief was, was, was sanctioning that, am I correcting that assertion?
They've already been sold. But he, he, he just talked about his response.
I, I was impressed that they were still available, just.
The five Dodge have been sold, um, the chief said he found out about it late. Um, however, he did make me aware that he's found a Tahoe for five hundred dollars that's worth twenty times that much. So maybe that's one more vehicle that we can get, and I called one of those business owners that wanted to give the twenty five hundred, and said we got a five hundred dollar Tahoe.
Uh, the chief, during the, uh, finance committee meeting Monday night, the chief laid out a dire, uh, need for his department as it pertains to, uh, vehicles. His office of being able to have safe vehicles at the same time, allowing them to, uh, care out there, respecting, protecting service dealers, and having, uh, the necessary vehicles for them to do that. Uh, and of course, he did indicate that he expected this council to give him a yay or nay on tomorrow night. The other thing is, uh, is the chief, is, is the chief aware of Long Lewis' comments to you and, and the documents?
That's what I wanted to talk to him about today, but he was in a class and couldn't call me back.
Because he's not aware of that.
Unless he's talking to him, which I would have hoped that he would have done before he brought us, anything to us from an outside, that he would have gone to at least our local dealers, at least to give him back to our community.
Well, uh, one thing is a must, our officers need vehicles. One thing is a must, that we got to give them what they need in order to protect and serve us. Uh, I heard they, I heard the cry about the decrease in revenues, because that's nothing new to me, I've been telling y'all this for the last two and a half years, that this city has been receiving a decrease in revenue for the last five years. So that's nothing new, and the fact that the finances of the cities on paper, that, that doesn't mean we got it in the bank.
Sure doesn't.
Uh, we got to be real about what we do up here, we got to be business savvy, but at the same time, we got to give the, uh, department, such as the police department, what they need, because, I mean, y'all, that department above all else is, is what we need to protect us. So is the chief, do, do you know if the chief is gonna be here tomorrow?
I'm not sure, he said he would call me tonight or in the AM, and I'll make sure I send out, um, our texts or conversation, or make you all aware of it. But I, 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 I think that, go ahead, let me allow you to finish.
Uh, well, you know, whether he's here tomorrow night or not, Mr. President, he did let us know Monday, that he is, that he's expecting an answer from us. And he's hoping the answer is positive, because his, his, his men and women of the civil police department is in dire straits and is in need of vehicles, like, right now. We also talked about, there was a, a citizen, an almost dead citizen arrested on one of our police officers because of the, the devastated vehicle that he was driving. And he had to point it out that, you know, I, I know there's malfunction here, but this is all I got. And he had to point it out that, you know, I, I, I know there's malfunction here, but this is all I got. And, and for a citizen to, uh, confront an officer, that's an embarrassing situation, y'all. We got to give our officers what they need. So hoping and praying that when you have, hoping the chief will give you a call. So we can have more current information tomorrow night, because if not, then we just got to move forward, get what we need for these officers.
When you said more current, current information, more current, what?
How about this, this vehicle, it's totally, he's, he's gonna be, get that one vehicle?
Yes.
And?
I mean, he just sent me that at three forty six.
And, and whether or not he's aware of Long Lewis' thought, uh, concerns about not being able to bid. You know, if Long Lewis is not aware of that, then I think that's a problem.
I, I do, yeah.
And, and we need to afford them that opportunity, just like we need Stivers.
What, I don't think that anyone bid on the process, what he stated to us is that they pulled him from the bid list, they're on the bid list. And so they can go to them from the bid list. Now, I don't understand that full process, but it doesn't appear to me that he went with respect and, and I think did any bids across the city, does it, then? Is that what everybody else received? Did you receive any information that a bid?
I did, I, I'm still.
I don't think a bid went out anymore. I think he, what he, he presented to us is that we need new vehicles. I've talked to, 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 um, for credit, I've talked to Stivers, who's on the list, and this is what they presented to us. He never said, I sent out three bids, I sent out a bid package, and I got five back in, I got one back in. That was never his conversation, what he stated was that.
The bids should have came throughout?
Right, she.
I have it not aware of this bid?
I don't know. But I would.
Let me suggest that you, uh, try to make contact with the chief.
I did.
To get, uh, more, to get information that we need prior to our assembly tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
To let the chief know that we are concerned about his needs, and we are, are ready to assist him, but there are some unanswered questions that we need answered.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, do that for us and bring as much information to us tomorrow as you can.
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you. Um, was this Jackson County, Alabama?
Yes, ma'am.
Jackson, up to Scottsboro?
No, ma'am, this was Jackson City.
Or even Clark County?
Right, that's what I'm thinking. Jackson, he said Jackson P.D.
Okay. Who was it that told you about this?
The, the, the chief just told me about the five hundred dollars. When I called after, but I didn't ask him whether it was the city or county, I just figured it was Jack.
What was the area code?
Um.
That, that would be Jack, that would be Clark County or Jackson City.
Yeah.
If it's two-five-six, that would be Jackson County, which is Scottsboro.
Yeah, I ca- I called like two weeks ago, so I have to look at my, um, desk and see if it's not gonna be on my contacts list.
But I, 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 and I wanted to make sure that I had a right understanding. The chief found out about these other departments that were selling these cars, and they were real good, and told you about them?
Uh-uh. I found out about them, and I told the chief about it. I mean, I said, when he found out about it.
Okay.
He said that what this is, and he wanted to do for when we found out about them, they had ours, so when he knew about it.
And, uh, other police departments were, were selling his car?
Yeah, Jackson.
That they already had them, Jackson.
Yeah, we had Scottsboro.
There's a place in Georgia that sells used cruisers too.
Yeah, I, I.
And then up north Alabama, there's a place that had them too, because I talked to folks about them, and she said they found them north of Alabama, and the chief mentioned Georgia.
Yeah, I know, I kind of know a little bit about what kind of happens with them too, how they, how they kind of sell them sometimes. But anyway, um, my, my hesitation in that is, one of the reasons that we're getting rid of the cars is because they're driving heavies that can't go, and I understand that these look like they could do. A lot of these cars, I mean, there's, there's a reason that these departments are getting rid of cars. Um, I, I'm a little bit familiar with Jackson Alabama, and I'm a little bit familiar with Scottsboro, with, with, with Jackson County and with Clark County. And they're doing better than we are, but neither one of them are really, really flush with money. So I, I, I can't imagine that they would have, now, unless they got some room to grant, that they would have to clean out all their cars. I can't imagine that either. But, I mean, I'm wondering what the reason is if they're getting rid of these cars. We don't think anybody else's problem.
No, we don't.
But, you know, that's just one thing I want to say. I'm a little real lock and hard about that. Because that's why I asked, I want to find out why the, you know, what the deal is about.
And I, well, I, another county that I called was Hoover, and they said they have a fleet, um, program. What, um, was related to me with Jackson is that they have a fleet program, and so every, so many years, what the chief's wanting to get here. And hopefully, that, what we can start here in October, and then, and it doesn't matter the mileage, and so many years they got to go. And so the oldest was, like I said, was the twenty-ten, but it was twenty-ten to twenty-fourteen. Um, he seemed excited about it and saying he had been missed, um, uh, but that was something that he missed. Uh, also, I contacted Hoover, they said they weren't having it available until October. And they said they would, they took down my name and number and asked me to send an email to them, and I sent them the email and said they would contact me when some become available. Um, hopefully, you know, we'll have our own fleet program, but, you know, to get a car for five hundred dollars, this is what the chief is saying.
Excellent, that is good, that, it, it.
Right, and if we can.
Like, they had it flooded out with mechanical problems and things like that, that is something very good.
Right, and so I was, what, what the chief asked, he said, um, have them, have options, look at solutions. And that's what I was trying to bring back to, uh, my council members, some options, some solutions. So we didn't feel pressed to move forward with something that we may not be able to afford long-term. Um, and then if we decided that we wanted to press forward with something long-term, that we are looking at purchasing them outright. Um, or at least purchasing them from April one through September. And where we can say, um, this is the amount that we're gonna pay and save on some of that interest rate. We are at a seven percent interest rate, we have not been approved. Um, they, they were, um, some of the things that we're gonna have to provide, if you all, um, read over the information, is most recent month-end report showing the balance of fund that the payments would be made on. So we may not be able to get approved. If we show the report, if we show the report that we get, we may not get approved. Another, um, thing that they want is the most recent audit, the financial statements. Um, based on our last audit, we haven't had the twenty-eighteen audit, but if we have the twenty-seventeen audit, we may not get approved either. So we, 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 we got to look at things in the interim while we're still trying to get through the approval process. And then a seven percent interest rate, that's just a little high, um, that I believe. And I, I, I think we'd be, it'd be most advantageous if we could bite the bullet this year and say, okay, our officers need it, and we're gonna have to bite the bullet and pay for it over four months, over six months, and get this done. Um, I just think it'd be in the best interest of all.
Councilwoman, here's a minute, then, Councilwoman Johnson, and we're currently, uh, under, under storm.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just pulling back up my nothing, because, yeah, that was a long conversation. So I, I want to go back just briefly on the lodging taxes and, and so, because lodging taxes, uh, for the months of March, uh, may not even be here yet.
No, ma'am, this is based on February information.
Okay, so that's a slow one. And when we get the report from, I want to write bigger on us, which was just March, that number should go up and catch up with itself. Now, if that number doesn't go up and catch up with itself, then we need to do what I've been asking you need to do concerning hotel reporting, lodging and reporting. That number looks like that because that's a February number. But that number in April, when you get the number in April, it should catch up with itself, and it should be relatively the same. Uh, it may be a hundred dollars less, or it could be, God, God help us more. But it should catch up with itself, so we, we, uh, we are reporting from a slow one. Uh, the interest accounts, and all that you said, uh, the interest account and the public works account are two, uh, recommendations that you're saying that we can pull from and go ahead and take, and go ahead and take care of business. I'm, I'm with that.
Typhoon?
Um, because, you know, hey, a five hundred dollar car? I don't know. Um, sure, right. I probably would too, but I couldn't buy it for the cops out there. But anyway, but sometimes, uh, you, you brought up a, uh, an important, important, uh, councilwoman, uh, sometimes, and I just told this to a friend, uh, sometimes the cars look good and, and, and perhaps they haven't flooded out or something that's happened that's not being revealed to you. I just told this to a friend who is probably smiling right now as they hear me say this. Because, uh, things that look good might not be good, and then, and, you know, for somebody to say, I'll give you just the five hundred dollars, it makes my antenna go buzz. But I'm not a car person, it just may be a fabulous, fabulous deal where they just want to give it to, I mean, this palate. Uh, but I'm with, uh, the interest account that is, is sitting there, uh, named interest account. And the public works account for one hundred and twenty thousand, that, uh, only ten thousand has been used. Uh, and probably not much more is gonna be used because we have brand new stuff, uh, in that repair account. And so I'm with the outright bright purchase of getting the correct, uh, vehicles, the vehicles that are needed. Because if we do not, we're gonna end back up in this space right here, back in this conversation right here. That says, oh, the five hundred dollar car has broken down, uh, yeah, we need, it's just, it, council was just totally crazy. And so I'm, I'm with pulling from the accounts that are, um, that are sitting there. Uh, once we look over this, now that we, uh, have these, all these eyes going on, now that we have this information, go look at it, meditate on it, and see if even those two of our, might not be, might not be, but, uh, I'm not with, uh, this two hundred thousand dollar deal, one seventy-three, whatever it is, I, I'm just, that's, that's a lot of money. I, y'all had me stuck on forty dollars, forty thousand, I was like, ooh, right here, forty thousand is all we need. And now we made it up to two hundred thousand.
Yeah, let me, let me address the lodging tax. The lodging tax, um, is actually from October through February. And so it's, it's from November. Um, but I will tell you that, um, if you look at your report, we collected forty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents in lodging tax in October.
Forty-nine dollars?
No.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's a wrong.
Forty-nine dollars.
I'm just reading the report.
That's like, they ain't recording that.
I'm sorry, hold on, hold on, that's not true. Hold on, hold on, that's not true, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. There was only a difference of forty-nine dollars.
Oh.
So that's a good one. That's a good one. There was. Hold on, let me get corrected. No, there was only a difference of forty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. And so that wasn't a bad one, that was, um, cumbersome, but what we usually collect, um, from this, with, but December was down nine thousand dollars, um, January was up, and actually, February was up. But this seven thousand dollar increase in November killed us, the nine thousand dollars in December killed us, and it was only down forty-nine dollars in, in October. So we were only down forty-nine. The, the, um, other thing, Councilwoman, with, um, the vehicles. I, um, I understand exactly what, what you were saying when it comes to those, um, those vehicles. What the chief stated is that our, our vehicles are running at like a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand miles. And so what I'm, I'm looking at, and I don't know much about vehicles, so please, count it to my, my head and not my heart. Um, but when I'm looking at sixty-five thousand miles, I'm like, well, maybe they don't travel as much, and maybe they could be pretty good, and maybe we could get, you know, to a hundred thousand before they start breaking down, you know.
You know, that five hundred, five hundred dollar car is at sixty-five thousand miles and been flooded out?
No, if you don't let me. Right.
No, as the thunder rolls, continues to roll outside.
I wanted to tell y'all something about the, about the bar.
Think about what we're gonna do, concern is that, uh, person, there's an expectation, as I understand, Councilwoman LaShaw, it said there's an expectation.
We did say it was gonna get voted up a thousand the other year. Well, we can do that, that's.
Uh, and I don't, I don't mind us voting, um, to proceed, but I don't, I think it'd be irresponsible of us, um, to have a local vendor to say, I wasn't invited to the table, and I want to be a part of it, and they're just not knowing about it. And it should have been, but it should have been me that, to talk to them, but they said no one has.
See, one thing I've always advocated for over a year ago, that I would, I mean, the parents that need to come and invite the business owners here to explain to them what the bid process is, and, you know, we'll continue to, uh.
But if we, as, if, if we as the leaders of the city, if we as the department does not follow, uh, our own rules, then they're still would not know. So if, if I didn't go to Long Lewis and say, hey, um, do you all have any interceptors? And, or did you all get a chance to, um, put in a bid on this? They wouldn't have known.
We need to close the gap.
And they're.
Um, grip, uh, grip, we need to, um, but in our past, uh, Mr. President, we did allow, which Moore Stewart did bid. We tried to work with Moore Stewart. I think the last set of talks we got, we got to stop, but our Long Lewis was not, they priced us so much higher than Spire. So we ended up getting from, no, I'm not, not, can I finish, Tom? I'm just saying, we, you know, we do want to offer a get Long Lewis opportunity. I'm just saying, the last time, uh, the local four here, uh, they bid way higher. That's why we ended up on Spire. But I agree, we do need to allow Long Lewis to do a bid, but we do need to make moves though.
And, and the other thing, I think, to your point, Michael, is that we need to make sure that what Stivers gives us is apples to apples. Stivers has routinely denied us or, or not put on pieces of the car that changes the final price. And so if you're bidding, if you're Long Lewis or Moore Stewart or whoever it was at the time, you know, Moore Stewart at the time, Long Lewis now, and you're trying to bid on something, and you come in with your price for all the pieces of the car included, and, and, and Stivers gets the bid, but they didn't include the front rack and some other stuff, that ain't, that ain't fair to our local vendors either, so. It's hard to know that, you know, because you're not looking at the information that's on there. So we have to trust in those ahead of us, and I hope we can get some clarity on that, because I do agree with everybody on that. We need to shop locally, everything we buy is in, everything. I know, my wife's in the house with my children.
That the dealers have, and the sponsors, or local dealers, uh, have not had an opportunity to bid. Let the chief know that, that we would like to give up some consideration. So there may not be an up and down vote tomorrow, but once we finally have two of them, and give them an opportunity to bid, then maybe we can have a special call meeting, uh, to vote up and down.
Right.
I agree with this for sure.
And I, and I, I, I not only concur with that, um, I'll, I'll speak to him tomorrow, and then I don't mind coming in for a special call.
Say, what, what's about Tuesday? We can get, yeah, Thursday, Thursday, you know, the first day. What do we?
Friday.
We have to reject our bids and start over.
What we can do is.
We haven't had.
We haven't had a bid.
Oh, so what's the?
He went to someone.
He went to that.
The chief went to.
He went.
Without going through the bid process.
He don't have to go through the bid process.
He hasn't even had the bid process.
Okay, uh.
Yeah, let me, let me just say one thing, we need to look at the money in the I.T. department.
Can we do that?
So two hundred, no, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, six hundred and fourteen dollars was budgeted. We've already spent two hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. Um, last year altogether, all we spent was a hundred and ninety-four thousand. And I cannot stress enough that I thought that all items were supposed to come before the council to be approved. And so if we spent, already spent this much.
That's on the new.
Let me, let me ask you a question, was that part of? I know we had some bond fund left over.
It just says. I.T. data processing expenses. Well, if we had a treasury, we could have collected, because we could have these questions. What we have now is someone that emails us to, and when we ask a question, say, it's in the report, it's in the report. So I'm doing the very best I can, going to talk to the ladies in finances, coming back, and presenting you all with the information that we all received. Now, let me tell you one thing, and I'm about to get high. Please, Jesus, bring me all the way down.
Bring it down.
Bring it out, Jesus.
Bring it down.
He can do it. They have, they believe, there's been statements, say that if you tell them, they'll believe it. But if you put it on paper, they won't read it. That's not me.
Oh, what they say.
That's not me. I'm going to read it. I'm not going to believe everything you tell me.
That right?
And so don't ask, don't point me back to the reports. If you all don't want to take the time to sit here and vote them, I will not go to another finance meeting that we don't have someone from the finance office present, because all we're doing is talking. We need to decide what we're going to do as a body without a leader, without a head, a financial body that doesn't have a treasurer to lead us in financial decision. I don't believe we should make a vote on anything unless we have a, have someone to instruct us. But we choose to say, okay, this department needs, this department needs, this department needs. And you, and then we have some to get weary because I talk too long about the finances that, that no one is looking at. That's no one is taking time, and we shouldn't have to do it by ourselves. What we should do. And we shouldn't have to do it by ourselves, what we should have. What I'm, what I'm saying, Councilwoman Assur, Councilwoman Assur, what you have stated, what you have stated previously, is that you've looked at all these documents.
And I still look at them.
And you still look at them. And I, and while you're looking at them, I hope you bring up some of the things, erroneous things that are being done by the administration that are not supposed to be done. When I say I'm looking at documents, I'm not just looking for funding, I'm looking at those things that we should not be, uh, we should not allow. We should not allow for any administration, for anyone in any position, to keep on making, uh, opportunities for funding, to keep on spending the city money when we made a resolution, repeal it, repeal it, stop it. It is erroneous if we made a vote on October twenty-third that we, we would not spend anything, and it continues to be spent, it's erroneous. It's erroneous. You're not supposed to spend money if there's a vote that says nothing is supposed to be spent unless it comes before the council, that's all I'm asking.
It's a truth.
Follow what I was, follow our guys, or get rid of voting.
Well, I, I, I wanted the gentleman to say.
No, they don't want to stay.
When these get heated, and heated like this, is because we all have to wait around and stick around and listen to one another. And that's, that's for all of us. And the reason we get so heated is because at some point, we've had different laws to get up and leave. And so, and when we don't want people to get up and leave, we have, we too ourselves have to stick around and listen. I'm very, very patient up here, and sometimes I'm just really, really, really go. The only time you see, will see me tip out is if my son and my seventeen-year-old has a presentation, he hasn't had our presentation, so I've been here. Uh, but we have to respect that, uh, with one another, all of us, all of us.
We do.
And that's what this work session is for.
That's right.
Uh, it's supposed to be a short meeting on tomorrow, but that's what this work session is, is, is for, y'all. We meet four times, four times a month, four times a month, that's it. Two of the meetings are supposed to be long, two of the meetings are supposed to be short.
Like tomorrow?
Like tomorrow, but hey, we should get out here at five thirty. As much as we talk tonight, we should get out at five thirty, y'all, tomorrow.
Listen, could I ask you one question? Can anyone tell me, as of March eleven, what we spent four hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars, seven minutes, something? In one month? Can anyone tell me where we spent that money? I can look, they, they say, look at the payment register. But the payment register doesn't come out to the same amount that's on the form. So how many payment registers am I supposed to look at? Is that two months of payment register? I don't know, that's why I need a treasurer here so I can ask.
That's why we need a treasurer, and that's a pertinent point that you made also. So at some point, we want a treasurer, at other points, we don't want a treasurer, but we need a treasurer, y'all. We're not the experts in that area right there, like, we've been given a job to do in compliments with a treasurer who knows what she is doing, who went.
Well, they're doing, they're turning off.
Yeah, one, one, one who is, one who would be prepared, they work to her, is going to say, oh, no, I'm not cutting this check. This is not my job, I'm certified and I'm bonded, I'm not going to cut this check. That's kind of treasurer on top of that.
And also, too, you know, I think we're the guy, but it's kind of hard, when you run the day-to-day operations, and you're in a hostile working environment, you're going to do what you need to do.
Yeah, but that.
All I'm suggesting is that we have someone in that place, if, even if, if it's in the envelope. I'm not advocating for one particular person, but I know that we need someone that can be able to do more than just send us a copy of the paperwork, an email, and tell us to look over. Thank you, we need someone to forecast, it should not be, I should not be in a position to say, hey, guys, in five years, we're going to have a two million dollar payment, so we should not spend an extra forty thousand dollars right now, because we can't determine how we're going to make the two million dollar payment, how we're going to make two million, five hundred thousand and forty dol, excuse me, five hundred forty thousand dollars, because it's actually the two point.
Yeah, that's why I'm going to ask for that account for.
Yes, and you know what, we need someone.
All right.
And I know the backs of citizens are as suffer as it is anyway, can't go for the backs of these folks, because if that's the ground, that means all the businesses went down with it.
If we, if we're saying, we, we don't have money, all I'm saying is, stop spending money. Stop spending money, when you spend four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in one month, and the council doesn't know one thing you've been spending on? And then I, if you look at the report, guys, look at your purchase order report, they said this is from the general, general fund. I have my eight thousand dollar bill, eight thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollar bill from, from, uh, from my science that came out of oilies, that's not general fund. So how many more errors are in there?
And look at your question too, uh, before we go.
You know, I'm not blaming the ladies, they're doing the very best they can without, we need a treasurer. No one in that office claims to be a treasurer, they're not saying that I am a treasurer, but we need someone in the, in the office.
We need a treasurer.
Yes.
Okay, anybody, anybody have a thing? Can you, can you email us that, that recommendation about who we're purchasing our funds?
Okay.
For we can just go on that tomorrow.
I, I got it for it, first thing in the morning. Meeting closer to council team, but I need to go.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman, Councilwoman.
I just want to let know the council, all of them, they ran out. But what I tell them tomorrow night, we invited out to a community, uh, Saturday. Churches are trying to, you know, get the community together, you know, have a, a day for families and stuff to come out of, and everybody at the council, and everybody. And, uh, President, but can you please hope that, uh, can you make sure the mayor sign off on that information? Because we need to get the streets blocked off. I couldn't get in the office, you know, I'm knocked in the doorbell room. I never get in, Johnny Sugar just walk in, just comes in. I, I, then I just, for thirty minutes, I didn't get in, so I just put it up under the door. Can you make sure that he, he gets that back to, just.
Also too, I'm just going to email to y'all the recommendation from the finance committee meeting that we talked about, I'll just email it to you tomorrow.